Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall council chambers located 1716 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. If everyone will please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night, these citizens, these board members, and all of our city employees and first responders. Please lay your healing hands on Roy and Cindy Key and the families of those that were lost this weekend and all of our first responders that were involved. Give us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we go about the city's business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to establish a quorum if I may. Roll call from my left, please.
Burns here.
Evans here.
Jacobs here.
Person here.
Edwards here.
We have a quorum. I'd first like to acknowledge our distinguished guests. We have sitting in the audience tonight Kate Weller with the EDC, Planning Zoning, Keith Bond, Vice President of the EDC, Gary Damiano, Secretary of the EDC, Monica Damiano, Chair of Parks Board. Appreciate all of y'all in your service. We will now move to Citizens Communications. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551007, members of the public may speak on any topic. Comments are limited to three minutes and no action may be taken by the council. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. We have two speakers tonight. Our first one will be Amara Sfaith.
Thank you, Amara Sfaith. I'm still on Pine Bloom. So what you can measure, you can fix. Another old adage goes alongside it, it's measure twice, cut once. Because it isn't enough to just measure, you have to measure correctly to apply the right solution. For example, if my left leg is shorter than my right, but I use the lift in my right shoe, I make things worse. I fixed the wrong thing. For too long, the city has measured the wrong data, and last year's animal control ordinance was a lift in the right shoe fix. I understand animal control can be complex with limited staff and competing priorities, but let me carry my thoughts further. From January 25 to March 19, there were 33 documented incidents of stray nuisance dogs on my street or immediately adjacent. Thirty-three in 53 days. In the next 53-day period, there were 18 incidents. Tonight marks 42 days into the third period, and I'm pleased to report only four incidents. That's an 88% drop in five months. But there's more. Thirty-eight of those 55 total incidents came from just two owners. So if you remove those two owners, you reduce the incidents by 69%. That's like getting a $55 bag of groceries at Walmart for $17. This suggests a targeted approach to animal control is more cost-effective and impactful than a one-size-fits-all solution. While a new ordinance might have aimed to address systemic issues, the data show enforcement is the key. My observation then, based on empirical data, is this. One, the city never needed a new ordinance, it needed to enforce the one on the books. 60% of the 55 incidents occurred outside Monday to Friday, 8 to 4, 4 hours. Now with 24/7 animal control coverage, we're seeing measurable improvement. Two, the City Council needs more robust metrics to make the best decisions. How you measure is just as important as what you measure if you want lift-in-the-left-shoe solutions. Better enforcement has not only reduced nuisance dog incidents on my street, it's enhanced neighborhood safety and quality of life. I can't tell you how much better it is to be able to sleep without the dogs running around the neighborhood barking. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight will be Charles Ligon.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Charles Ligon, 305 West Main here in Gunbarrel. And I'm here tonight representing the Cedar Creek Amateur Radio Club. This weekend, coming weekend, we have what's called our Annual Field Day. I'll give you a brief description of what that is. Field Day is the annual amateur radio contest widely sponsored by the International Amateur Radio Union and the AWRL, which is American Radio Relay League. It encourages emergency communication preparedness. Among amateur radio operators in the United States, it is typically the largest emergency preparedness exercise in the country with over 30,000 operators participating each year. Field Day is always the fourth full weekend of June, beginning at 1800 UTC Saturday and running through 2059 UTC Sunday. Since the first AWRL Field Day in 1933, radio amateurs throughout North America have practiced rapid deployment of radio communication equipment in environments ranging from operations under tents in remote areas to operations inside Emergency Operations Centers, or EOCs. Operations using emergency and alternative power sources are highly encouraged. We will be operating three radios this year on battery power. Since electricity and other public infrastructures are often among the first to fail during natural disasters or severe weather, that's why we will choose to do battery power. To determine the effectiveness of the exercise in each of each participant's operations, there is an integrated competitive component, and many clubs also encourage concurrent leisure activities such as camping and cookouts. We'll probably do some of that, too. Operations typically last continuous 24 hours, requiring scheduled relief operators to keep stations on the air. Additional contest points are awarded for experimenting with unusual modes, making contacts via satellite, and involving youth in the activity. I am here tonight to personally invite each and every one of you to come out this weekend and also the general public. We would love to have you, we'd love to have you even participate. The FCC will allow us to put you on the air even though you're not licensed. So we would love to have you make a contact with somebody anywhere, either in the world or across the country. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Charles. Thank you, sir. Moving on. Consent Agenda. 6A, all matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports. May 27, 2025, special and regular meeting minutes, and EDC, April, financials. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second? If no further discussion. Vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Person, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Consent Agenda passes. Moving on. 7B. A presentation of quarterly department reports, including fire, streets, and park maintenance. First up will be fire, representing, our fire will be Jordan West.
Excuse me, this is my first time up here.
Is there a clicker?
No, got any clicker? There it goes. All right, so this is our quarterly report, March through May. We've ran 242 calls total in the timeframe. You can see the trends as the cooler March months go up to the warmer May months. You can see the different types of calls and the trends that tick in whatever accordance to the season that we have. I think back in March, we had 10 fires. Now we're in May where it's a little bit warmer, we're down to seven. Medical calls pick up as we go from, I believe that's 18 to 39, I think is what it says. Sorry, I can't see quite that far. All right, so comparison from this year to last year, we're up about 42 calls in this quarter. In the chart, you can kind of see where we've increased in fires. We've had an increase in medical calls from, in that three-month period, from 2024, it was 115, we're up to 124. Daily statistics, basically as of right now for this quarter, our busiest days of the week are going to be our Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Saturdays are picking up. I'm assuming the next quarter that we show these reports, you would expect during the summer months, the weekends are probably going to be more busier. It kind of depends on the season and what we've got going on in town. Our average hour right now is around that 1,400-hour. That's going to be our busiest time, and that's just basically an average of when the calls came out at the most frequently during the course of the March-to-May search. We've had some good training here lately. We did a vehicle extrication training. We actually, JLJ was able to donate us some vehicles that we could cut up, and we actually got two trainings out of their donation of these vehicles. These pictures were taken on the first day of training. We worked on, if you look at the second picture on your right, that is vehicle stabilization, and the one on your left is our Jaws of Life, that is actually our cutters. Jaws of Life is actually a brand name, and that's the brand that we carry. Worked on rapid extrication. We were able to take, with our street department's help, we were able to take these vehicles and mangle them up a little bit, make it a little bit more challenging for us. There again, picture of the stabilization, using our stabilization jacks or rescue jacks, a couple of different scenarios, car on its wheels, car on its side. We ended up taking that car on its side, cutting off the roof, and completely removing a victim from it. There's all the guys that participated in the training. We did have all three shifts come in. It was a joint training between A, B, and C shift. We all got together. That's some of our equipment. If y'all have any questions over what that equipment is or anything on that, feel free to find and ask me later. We also had our multiple-agency water rescue training. Every year, we've gotten it to where we go to the neighboring communities around Cedar Creek, and we do a water rescue training with the fire departments. I know Maybank and Kemp, they usually have like a dive team. We'll have Tool, Trinidad, Seven Points, we'll have all the agencies, Paint Springs, they bring their apparatus out, they bring their boats out, and basically we give mock drills. It's, okay, I've got a drowning victim, I need to get him out of the water, onto the boat. Different things along those lines. We have our boat that has the live scope and all that stuff on it, so we can try to find victims and stuff like that in the water. And then lastly, we have some hose training. Keeping our apparatus, our hoses, our apparatuses are tested, hose tested every year, hoses are tested every year. Every now and then, we got to get out there and just start throwing some hose in the ground. It's a lot of cleanup, but hey, it's some of the best training we can get. It's getting water out there. How does this water react? How do I make this water shuttle this way, this way, or that way? Couple of different things that we can practice by doing that, hose handling, fire suppression techniques. This was actually some brand-new hose that a company brought out for us to demo. Anybody got any questions for me?
Questions for staff? Thank you, Jordan, I appreciate you very much. Next up will be Streets and Park.
Mayor, I am doing that. Mr. Hall called me when he got home, and he is not feeling well. If you can just click through for me, Janet, that's fine. He wasn't feeling well and did not want to come up not feeling well. There's been a stomach bug going around, so we don't want him here if he's got it. So we'll start off, this is March, April, and May for the Street and Parks Department. Mike would do a much better job of telling this story than I do. Street Division has been focusing a lot on equipment repair, doing preventative maintenance so we can stay ahead of having problems on our trucks, on our machinery, changing the oil and filter and lubing those things. In the last three months, they have done 300 linear foot of asphalt street repair, they have done 259 feet of culverts, they've done 315 linear feet of ditch maintenance. Believe it or not, they have filled 2,147 potholes. They've replaced 14 damaged signs around the city. That's kind of a sign maintenance program. As they're driving around, they look for signs that are damaged, signs that have fallen, and then get those replaced. And based on all the storms we had during those months, mainly wind, you'll see from the pictures, 652 man-hours out, water, ditches, putting out signs, cleaning up trees. Quick community center update, as of May the 31st, they have covered all of the community center. I saw today that they are starting to put in windows and doors. There will be an update going on to Facebook this week, tomorrow. Brooke has a full, almost a page and a half update of exactly the status as of last Thursday, so that will be going up Facebook and the website in the next 24 hours. And then, some of you may know, we had an auction. Mike spent a significant amount of time in March and April getting everything ready for that auction. The auction's now closed, and people are picking up the things. We auctioned off old cars, we auctioned off filing cabinets and equipment that no longer ran, and so we did that through Renee Bates. I think I shared that link with everybody. The next slide has some pictures on it. So the top left-hand side is the community center, and the top right-hand side is the community center, and then the middle bottom is the community center. Those are pictures from just in the last week. You can see some of the trees down. We got some calls early, early on a Saturday morning, with the ground being as wet as it was and the trees being as wet as they are, we had a lot of limbs falling. So our team responds to that. Typically, fire calls us, or the dispatch calls and says, hey, we have a tree down, and it's kind of all hands on deck. It happened right across Harbor Point, middle of traffic, 5 o'clock, tree falls. It's right outside the city limits, but we have to get it moved. So we got it off the road and then called the county to come do the cleanup, but it's kind of all hands on deck when that happens, and the fire guys, and the street guys, and PD, and whoever's around to help us get that tree limb out of the street. And then you can see they had done some ditch work in that bottom picture. And then the Parks Division, this is their busiest time of the year. They are taking care of the grounds, daily trash pickup, getting the restrooms cleaned, repair amenities when needed. The park has been covered up with people, with everything going on down there. They're mowing City Hall, EMS, the police department, the dog kennels. They also maintain one of the islands out on 198. They will, I'll show you a picture, but they did install new sand and nets for the volleyball court. We were getting some requests for that. I was approached at the lawnmower races on Saturday night and asked if they could start a coed league when softball's done. So that's kind of already Lauren and Brittany and Brooke are all kind of helping me, help them behind the scenes potentially start playing coed sand volleyball after baseball, after softball's done. So that's already making a difference. Pickleball court, we painted the additional courts onto the pickleball court. They have started a plan for walking trail drainage. They have to fix the drainage first. They've done a test section of some new material that's been done for a while, but with all the rains, they just haven't had a chance to do this, and I'll show you a map of kind of where they're going to put in drainage. And then they will start ticking away at using the reclaimed asphalt that we have to start working on the trail. And then ball fields. If you haven't been to the ball fields on a Friday night, these guys have poured a ton of time and effort into getting them ready, making sure they're ready. I think it rains about three days a week, and then they still want to play on Friday, even if they have to have a snorkel and fins to get out there. So they have done an amazing job of every time possible getting those fields ready. The next slide has pictures. That's the sand volleyball court. They got rid of the old uprights and net and completely replaced them, so they're in there sturdy now, so they won't have any issues. Ball fields look great. We are getting a ton of compliments about them. They're being used pretty much five nights a week and on Saturday. You can see Lauren out in the audience shaking her head. Lauren is our official ball field booker. And so we're having two practices a night during the week, and then on Friday night, we have our softball league going on, and then we're still kind of working around some weekend tournaments. Those are the pickleball courts, that's the existing court. Instead of just having one, which is the white lines that you see, we painted two on each side so more people can play. We put out a box with pickleball nets in it, so the pickleball group has the code, and they go out, they get the nets, the temporary nets out, and more people can play at a time now. You can see they're mowing. The middle picture is where they are getting ready to install drainage. That will be done before July Fest. Once that drainage is done, then they will start working on trail improvements. But they've got to get that drain. Water just shoots down on that bottom half of that picture into the butterfly garden. It has been a longstanding problem. When I first started, the goal was, we were just going to, they were going to just cut the trail off and move the trail up about 50 feet, and I said, timeout, what other options do we have before we just reroute a complete trail and we don't have it go through that area anymore? And so Mike and his team, Paul and David, all came up with, let's put in some drain pipe to redirect the water to the place it needs to go. And then fishing. So we had a very large Texas bass fishing, and our team prepared for that. So this weekend, we had lawnmower races. So they are on the go. It's that time of year when they're on the go. And I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for staff?
I do. Is Harbor Point finished with your repairs?
So we have done, Harbor Point will be a three-phase project. We have done Phase 1. We are getting some bids to do some drainage work before we do Phase 2. Won't do us any good to fix the road if we don't fix the drainage first, so Mike is in the process of doing that. We got the first bid back, and the engineer's estimate of cost was about $200,000, so we had to get creative. So we are back to the drawing board, and he's gotten one bid. He was waiting on the second bid. So we will get the drainage problems fixed. We have a hotspot that we, we have a lot of water that comes in at one time. So once we get that fixed, then we will do Phase 2 and then potentially Phase 3. So we have the prices for all of that, and we'll talk a little bit more about that during
Further questions? Mike and staff do a great job.
They had, that was actually the first night race we had for the lawnmower races, and it was great. Huge turnout. Kudos to everyone that's involved in the park. The park has just really become a bright spot and a hub for the city, and want to thank Monica Damiano and her staff. I know Gilbert Shelby's been very, very integral in that also, but Mike and his group keeping it up. I mean, we're really starting to utilize that now with the leagues and everything. We're really starting to put a shine on that penny, and I'm really excited about it, and thanks to everyone that's involved. Thank you very much.
Update, I sent council an email today. They are getting ready to redo the landscaping out in the front of this building. This isn't a part of Mike's, because he has to stick to March, April, May, but while we're on parks, just real quick, they are going to, it is going to get worse before it gets better. All that stuff is going to die in the next week if it's not getting pretty brown already, but we're going to go back to the dirt. The Beautification Committee, man, rock stars, they cleaned out. You can walk down and see the section they cleaned out. I don't know how they did it. They pulled plants out and scraped and cleaned, and now Mike's team is going to come in and finish the rest of it and then get it all set back up with new weed barrier and all those things, so it doesn't get back in the condition it's in now, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Moving on, 7B. Considering, take action to authorize an emergency expenditure for the replacement of inoperable audio and video equipment in the council chambers from the Capital Improvement Fund for an amount not to exceed $25,000. Our sponsor on this again will be our city manager, Dr. Smith.
So we have talked about this since last year's budget. We had gotten some prices. We had gotten prices from $60,000 to $100,000 to do audio and video. During that time, our video started completely taking a nosedive. So for those of you in the audience, council has no monitors tonight. They're all operating off of printed-out PowerPoint packages, and you have seen some of the slides and the quality of the video that's up. So it was hard to read Jordan's numbers. That all has to do with VGA cables and the quality of the audio that's running through the system. And so what we made an attempt to do is, an immediate fix, is to get your video and get the video on the system working. Phase 2 in this will be to get our sound working. As you all know, Janet still doesn't have a microphone. When we're down at the tables, it's very hard to hear. So there are some things we can add to the system as a Phase 2. This is kind of an emergency to get all of the video working. They will re-cable it, they will make sure we have this magic thing called a crust on that makes everything work. That is getting some upgrades, but it will also work with all of our audio. All of our monitors are daisy-chained together with a bunch of different switches, and those switches are just, have lived their life, and they no longer are doing what they're supposed to do. So this won't cost the entire $25,000, but Janet and I wanted to leave ourselves just a little bit of wiggle room in case something came up. We have about $1,000 in consulting fees. DFW Audio and Video spent five hours here crawling under in the closet trying to help us band-aid it enough. It didn't work. It lasted one meeting, the next meeting, nothing worked. Tuesday night at our EDC meeting, only one TV worked. The next day for court, both TVs worked. So it's just how the switches are doing their thing. But the quote that we got to replace all of the video is $17,057.79. As I said, we'll have a little bit of consulting fee in there added to that. It will replace all seven of the DIAS monitors, it will replace both TVs, it will move everything to HDMI, put in all upgraded switches so that this can't, this will all work hopefully by the next meeting. They will have to order some equipment, so it may take 30 to 60 days to get it done. But we would take the funding for this out of the Capital Improvement Fund. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Discussion.
So it really doesn't fix the audio, we're just fixing video.
This is just the video, and then the audio will be the second phase, and they're putting that quote together now, and hopefully I will have that, I probably won't have it for our very first kickoff budget meeting, but I should have it by the time you guys have a proposed budget. And the main thing, these microphones work pretty well, actually. It's the portable microphones that don't work, and it is when we go into work session having some portable microphones, some kind of surround microphones. They make a microphone that works really well. So because this was the immediate emergency to get us where our viewers could see, our visitors and our viewers could see what we have, this was that price.
Further discussion? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we authorize an emergency expenditure for the replacement of inoperable audio and video equipment in the council chambers from the Capital Improvement Fund for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Evan's second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Vote from my right, please.
Edwards, yes.
Person, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Evans, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Moving on, economic development. 8A. Receive an update on the Pier 334 project and the $500,000 reimbursement grant awarded in 2021. Our sponsor on this will be our EDC director, Dr. Smith.
Mayor and council, when you hear me say "we," I'm, in this particular case, I am wearing my EDC hat. It is hard for me to separate the two, so understand that anytime I say "we," I'm talking specifically about the EDC because this is an EDC item. I am going to ask Mr. Stephen Haynes to come up and give you a quick update before we go into the specific $500,000 loan and the expenditures associated with that. Stephen, if you want to come up to the mic and he'll give you, he's got some new pictures. You guys are welcome to go through, uh but he'll give a brief update on kind of where the project is.
Hi, everybody. Councilman, mayor, city manager, thanks for having me. First, I'd just like to say that there are literally hundreds of hours of work have gone into a six-minute update. So it's, it's, it's hard for me to say that, but it's true. Um so the grading has commenced, as you all have seen. And we um expect to have that done by middle of July. Uh we did get a little bit of bad news. The, the dirt there is very sandy or very clay and nothing in between. So we're going to have to pull out about seven feet of um of the dirt and bring in some select fill. And the pad for the hotel is 23,000 square feet. So 23,000 times 7,000 is a lot of trucks. Uh we'll still be able to br- give um Mike most of the dirt that he needs, but it's easier for us to take the trucks full out of there, back to the pit where we're getting the select fill from and just go back and forth like that. So you'll see a bunch of trucks moving here. Um they're going to try to keep it as, as clean as they can. Um right after the grading is done, they'll start working on the storm drain plan and system, which in, is putting in, you know, the, the uh, all of the storm drains and the, and the different filters and pipes that go down into the, into the lake to take off the rainwater. Um Encore has told me now for four months, they will be removing the poles shortly. So we're hoping that sometime this summer, they will actually come and take the eight power poles and transformers that we don't need off of our site. Um when they do, they'll also be delivering to us their, their plan for burying all the utilities. So um we'll be able to start on that. A temp pole is going to go in this week so that we have some power out there. And um we should be up, Encore's approved it, so it should go up sometime this week. Um and then right after the storm wa- storm drain plan is done, the sewer designs should be in. We've already finished lift station. And now we just need for the West Cedar Creek and East Cedar Creek, depending on who's doing what, to give us our clean water plan and our uh our sanitation plan. That's, our, our engineers have done, finished it and they've sent it in for review. And we're just sitting around waiting. Um so on the real estate side, we have closed on the Sandy Shores parcel, which is behind the Crossroads Liquor Store. We closed last week. Um so that is now purchased, deed it over to Pier 334 and we're all set. Um strangely or interestingly enough, we're in conversations with some adjacent property owners that would like to sell us their land. So we'll let you know if there are any developments, but we're talking to them. Um they actually came to us. Um then on the Hilton side, we've got approval for um for the interiors. That is now done. So we have the actual building finished, now the interiors are done. And uh so I was going to show you here in a couple of minutes is I'll just walk you through what, what they've approved and what we're going to be doing. Um we have filed for our permits, they're three weeks ago with the city. So we gave them a 200 megabyte file and the documents that go with it. It's been sent to the city's review company and we're waiting to hear back from them. We also have the um, our Disabilities Act and handicapped review finished. And we have a couple of things we had to do. Um something else very interesting. So we designed this and we've put handicap rooms in, the amount that we needed to put handicap rooms in. And they came back and said that it's also discrimination if we don't give the same views to the handicapped rooms. So we had to have the same number of rooms on each floor in different areas. So it wound up with two more handicapped rooms than we potentially by code needed, but because of the views were going to be different. And well, it doesn't sound like very much. Handicap bathrooms are a foot and a half larger than regular bathrooms. So when you start moving walls in a, in a hotel around, um it changes a lot of things. But we're through, we're finished. We've already replatted or redesigned everything and it's back with the city's um approval guy for, or company for the permits. Um we have filed for and received a permit to, to renovate the house on uh 102 Jeffrey Circle. What we're doing there is we, we gutted it and we're going to build two model rooms, which Hilton requires. So there'll be two guest rooms that are fully functional and you'll all be able to go in and look at, see what the rooms are going to look like. Uh we have to deliver those by August 1st. And we had to order one, well, actually two of everything. Two of the sets of drapes, two sets of, you know, the tiles for the bathrooms, the, the tub enclosures, the beds, the window treatments, you name it. So that you will have two exact rooms that we're going to have in the hotel when it's done. They come in, they look at it, they decide if they like it or not. They make a couple of small changes every time and then you're good to go and order your FFE package. Um so Janet, with having said that, if you wouldn't mind going back to the slide, the first one? Okay, okay. So as you guys know, that is what it's going to look like from the outside. That was already approved by Hilton. And that is the site plan that's also already approved by, by the city and Hilton as well. Next slide. That's the ground floor with the lobby. So you could see the yellow is, is actually brown and that is a tiled floor. On the far left north corner on the top is the restaurant. It's got an outdoor seating for four tables and it's got room for 60 people inside and a big bar. And that um is going to be fine dining. And then as you come down and then kind of on the level-out portion, you see a whole bunch of like little, looks like flowers. Those are actually si- um eight people tables in the banquet area. It holds 168 people. And everything to the left of that and back up is our kitchen, which is enormous because it's going to be able to bet, so uh take care of banquets of 168 people and the 65-room um restaurant. And it'll be able to take care of the lobby bar and room service. So it is just a, quite an amazing kitchen. Um and it's really kind of cool. If you go back one more minute, one more second, Janet, to the prior one. And then on the far right-hand side is, that is kind of the lobby where you walk in. The dark green area is just a seating area. The triangle to the far right is a, is a patio that overlooks the amphitheater. And then you can see the pool and the pool deck, which is the other green area, which is basically in the middle and towards the top of the slide. Okay. Um that is what the lobby, I wish the colors were better. That's what the lo- reception desk and the lobby look like when you walk in. So it's got um murals throughout and custom millwork. And you could, it's, it's just the reception area that you're looking at, okay? That is what it is. Those are the, the chairs we selected, the fabrics, the floor, the murals and the ceiling. Um all pretty cool. And if you go to the very back, which you, you kind of can see, there's a bar there that you'll be able to sit and watch whatever's going on in the marina. Um our pool deck, that's um, we wanted an infinity pool. Hilton will not let us do it. We have to have five feet around in case somebody is in the pool and struggling. They able to get to them quickly from every angle. So I'll show you the last two slides of the pool deck redesign, but that's very, very close to what we've got. We designed it with a smaller pool and a much bigger outdoor area because Hilton is telling us that we'll have a lot more parties out there and receptions and weddings and things. And people would rather be on the deck drinking than in the pool swimming. So we took their word for it. That is what, what the banquet room looks like, just so you could see the setup. Um it is no windows on the back, windows onto its little promenade and right out onto the pool deck. So um it's set up where you can actually have things going on in the hallway as well. Um it's an ex- extra wide hallway in between the actual rooms and they're broken in two. So you'd be able to have two different banquets going at the same time if you wanted or one big one. Those are some of just the mural. The mural on the bottom right is um one of the ones that was selected by Hilton. Um that's what you look like when, what you look at when you walk into the restaurant are the murals. And the top one is what the bar looks like. And that's what it looks like from sitting with your back to the mural, looking out at the bar, which then overlooks the water. This is the, okay, let's go ahead. This is the uh, the hallway, the top left, hard to see, but the, that's what the door looks like going into your room. It's got a, they wanted a bronze number panel and then the doors are all, it's dark mahogany and you'll see the different color palettes they picked. And that's what the bedroom will look like. Um king and queens, big headboards. Um and they, we have so many suites, they must all have seating areas either on a patio overlooking the water or in the room. And one of the features about the hotel is everything is a floor-to-ceiling window. It's really unique. That is what the room would look like. And so we, we spend a lot more money on, on windows than we did on, on furnishings. So that you have, you know, when you're there, you're looking at the water. And I guess we just go down, Janet, to the pool deck. They were the colored ones of the very, maybe the very bottom you put them in? Keep going, yeah. Keep going. This is just swatches and, and there's one. So that's what the pool deck will look like with the five foot around so that we can get in if we, somebody needs help. You can see the stairs go up to the right. The entire lobby is s- is floor-to-ceiling glass. So all the views in the lobby looking out will be over the pool and then, and then at the marina and the water. I think there's one, one more from the top. So um I would like to just say one, one last thing. I'd like to, I know everyone here shops at Lowe's, but I'd like for you all to thank Lowe's. Um they started a program about a year and a half ago, which is they want to be in the hospitality business. They want to just take their vendors and their, their business and they want to service hotels and restaurants and bars. And we are one of the three tests that they've picked. So Lowe's has been able to, to go and use all of their relationships with the people that sell them product and lever it for the hospitality business. So um in the last four or five months, you guys have noticed all in the news about tariffs and everything. Well, Lowe's was wonderful and they went around the country. And we identified, you know, through an off-take of what we needed. And they were able to, to take stuff off the floors in places like uh Seattle and Boston and Chicago, where maybe sales were a little bit slower than Texas, or maybe they had more of something that they needed. And they actually let us buy it. And now they're just going to substitute out the same exact product, no matter what price it is when it comes in. We paid a little over a million dollars to buy all the stuff, including the steel and things like that, that we had to have. And we were able to lock in the prices. So we are good to go and tariffs should not bother us at all going forward.
That's great.
And that's it. That's my update.
Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Dr. Smith?
Okay, now for the fun part. So back in August, on August 6th of 2021, um the EDC approved a $500,000 partnership. So there was a big partnership. It included land, it included purchasing some land, it included um a land donation and a cash donation. And so the EDC and then council approved a $500,000, what I will almost call a reimbursement loan. It was $500,000 to be spent specifically on this arrangement, agreement between the EDC and Pier 334 YNS Services. And we started, the EDC started spending money toward that. And so over the last several months, with a lot of help from the vice president of the EDC and Stephen Barnett and YNS Services, we have been able to track the spending on that loan to the penny. Um and so Stephen and I have rounded up every single invoice. Um you see them there, they are coded by date. Um you see each expenditure, you see what was actually spent and what was budgeted to be spent. Um we have a copy of each of these invoices. YNS Services has a copy of each of these invoices. And there is an outstanding amount of about e- exactly $63,468.12. There was some chatter about the EDC as a part of this loan, actually purchasing the property behind Crossroads Liquor. Um about a year ago, the EDC made the decision to not do that. It would have thrown us over the budgeted amount and to punt that to Mr. Haynes to buy that. Uh Mr. Haynes did buy that. He did buy it for $85,000. Once it was all settled in court, she was locked into that amount and Mr. Haynes did buy it for that um and has invoiced us for the amount of this loan that we had not spent yet. So uh tomorrow, Stephen will uh submit a check request to give Mr. Haynes the difference in this $500,000. So a couple of things that I want to make sure that council understands and I shared the exact same things with the EDC. Never was this money overspent. Um once all the invoices were in and we were able to track it to the penny, we could track exactly, Stephen had paid some invoices and we had reimbursed them. We had paid some invoices. It paid for some things like Mundo's compliance review, uh mailers and permits. Everything related specifically to the project. Um several different surveys, um s- a purchase of 2715 West Main. All of that was the early fees associated with the project. I'm presenting this to you tonight just as an information only because probably the only person on council today that was on council back in 2021 was Rita. And Rita helped with some of this too. So we tracked it all down and um outlined every single expense. And I want all of council to understand that when that expense comes through, we are just completing what the EDC and council agreed to back in 2021. This ties a neat bow on the EDC's contribution to this project, which is part of their performance agreement, to then see a portion of that revenue. Um I believe it's 16.7%. Yes, Stephen, correct? Um so this ties up and finishes up the EDC's commitment to this project. Uh Mr. Haynes is well on his way. I heard today all of your, all of your plan review is done. So next step is permit. I think you'll get an email in the morning that all of your plan review is done and been, everything has checked off. Um so he will get an email about that in the morning and then it will be punted to him to do permits, get his vendors registered and head down that path. And I know he's still waiting on some things with power and some different stuff, but we were this afternoon about, I guess Janet, about what, 4:30, 5 o'clock? I heard all of the plans had been reviewed and you will get a, get an email in the morning about that. So we've gotten the final email back from Bureau Veritas to really get the project going where it needs to go. I am happy to answer any questions. Um I, I can't be more clear than this loan is not overspent. This is to the penny. The receipt, you see the receipt numbers. Stephen has them all in a file. I'm happy to show them to somebody. Um they were either paid directly to the vendor or reimbursed. And if they were reimbursed, we have an invoice to associate that with. And this finishes the EDC's commitment to this agreement so that we have completed our portion of that agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Questions for Dr. Smith? Very straightforward. Stephen, thank you. Dr. Smith, thank you.
I'd just like to say, Stephen, it's absolutely beautiful. I can't, I can't wait to see it finished.
All right, moving on. 8B. Second reading of resolution number R dash 2025 dash 002, approving a performance agreement by and between the Gunbarrel's, uh, the Gun Barrel Economic Development Corporation and Gray Ghost Inc. I will read the resolution into the record. Resolution number R dash 2025 dash 002, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gun Barrel City, Texas, approving a performance agreement by and between Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation and Gray Ghost Inc., a Texas corporation authorized pursuant to section 501.103 and 505.158 of the Texas Local Government Code and providing for an immediate effective date. Our sponsor on this will be our city manager slash EDC director, Dr. Smith.
Janet, can you jump ahead a couple of slides and I'll cover this now? This is the second reading. We have talked about this. This is a small business incentive performance agreement with Gray Ghost. Uh DBA, Doing Business As GBC Family Resource Center. This facility is right off of Highway 334, kind of at the front. This facility is right off of Highway 334, kind of at the front of the Tamarack neighborhood. This is a 50% reimbursement grant. We will fund up to $12,500. Gray Ghost must spend $25,000. They are going to make parking lot improvements. They're going to spend about $20,000 on parking lot improvements and receive a $10,000 grant from us. And they're going to spend about $5,000 on signage improvements and receive $2,500 from us. There are some caveats in here that the Family Resource Center must do in order to receive this money in addition to the typical boxes they would check, which is providing us copies of all the receipts and copies of the council check that the work is done. They must move the 18-wheeler that's in the parking lot facing 334 to provide better visibility of the business. They must repair the roof of the facility. They were able to get a five-year warranty on the repair they're doing, so they have provided that to us already. They must spend $20,000 on parking lot improvements. They must spend $5,000 on signage improvements. They must obtain coup quotes. They must submit everything and be completed with the project within nine months of the signed agreement. They must maintain two full-time equivalent employees until September 30th of 2027 and they must provide two compliance verifications. And those typically are in the form of Texas Workforce Commission reports in both 2026 and 2027. And so, this is the second reading of this. And then also tonight, you will approve the resolution between the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corp. and Gray Ghost. The EDC approved it at their last meeting. Any questions?
If no discussion, we will move to 8C. Consider and take action to adopt Resolution Number R-2025-002, approving a performance agreement by and between the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation and Gray Ghost, Inc. Dr. Smith just spoke to this. If no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number R-2025-002, approving a performance agreement by and between the Gun Barrel Economic Development Corporation and Gray Ghost, Inc.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, vote from our left, please.
Burns, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Ursen, yes.
Edwards, yes.
Motion passes. Like to thank everybody again for coming to the council meeting this evening. This meeting is now adjourned.